Live.
Live. You push the city clerk clock, he can start. Who was watching that while I saw that? So.
We're waiting.
For the bill. I think it's broken. Thing. There it is.
Oh, meeting some quarters. Let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic for which stands one nation under God, in its full liberty and justice.
Roll call please. Mayor Proton Brown. Oh, you said roll. Okay, delete.
Delete.
Brown.
Here.
Councilman Liverland.
Here.
Councilman Bowman.
Here.
Mayor Trenary.
Here.
Okay, we got one public comment, Rich Ingle.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for allowing me to introduce. Uh, Richard Ingle, fourteen thirty-four North B Street, Colorado. I'm a volunteer in many organizations, including the Community of Carrion Foundation. So I'm here tonight to introduce. Uh, Stephanie Egan as the new Director of Operations down at the Community of Carrion Foundation. She's going to be assuming a new role in terms of taking some of the day-to-day. Um, minutia off the Ted Gordon's. Uh, table and putting it in her lap. And dealing with a lot of factors, including the greenhouse, which you're going to be addressing tonight. So Stephanie Egan is the council, so.
Nice being you.
Nice.
Congratulations.
So I would like to talk a moment about the greenhouse. You may ask, well, what do you guys use that for? We sublease it from the city. We essentially store seasonal items in there. There's a ton of Christmas decorations and things like that. We have other items that we store for the thrift shop such as, uh, you know, Easter and Valentine's and Saint Patrick's Day and Fourth of July and Thanksgiving and Halloween. And and Christmas as well, as well as overflow clothing and other items. That, uh, we don't have on the rack. We also store, uh, excess medical equipment, wheelchairs, walkers, canes, crutches. Uh, yeah, but disabled, uh. Chairs for bathtubs and showers and things like that. We also store some larger items that we don't have room to display such as furniture. So hopefully I can answer some of the background questions that you may have. But any other questions?
Well.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Congratulations.
Okay. For, uh, many minutes from the September twenty twenty twenty-three regular meeting.
A motion that we approve, uh, the September twentieth twenty twenty-three minutes.
I will second.
Vote please. Councilman Bowman.
Yes.
Councilman Liverland.
Yes.
Councilman Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Trenary.
Yes.
Okay, reports, City Administrator.
Thank you for your report.
Thank you. And Finance Director.
Thank you for your two-hour brief this afternoon. I will ask for you one reason.
Okay, thanks for all presentations, os and exclamations. Oh, the office, Melissa Trenary as Acting Mayor.
Go up top. It's up there now, you guys. So bring around.
I am Melissa Trenary. To solemnly swear by the ever-living God.
To solemnly swear by the ever-living God.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The laws of the State of Colorado.
The laws of the State of Colorado.
And the laws of the city of Cribble Creek.
And the laws of the city of Cribble Creek.
And will faithfully perform the duties of the office of.
And will faithfully perform the duties of.
Acting.
The office of Acting Mayor.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability. Okay. Legislative updates, Saul Mealy.
Hello. Saul Mealy, lobbyist for City Creek. Uh, it's good to be here, good to see you. I'm making my mid-interim trip. Um, just honestly, I, I, once a year, um, at least just to come down here to talk to me, ask questions. Uh, for me, it's really important just for me to be here. So, um, nice to meet you. Uh, but really, it's, it's, uh, we're halfway through the year, so we're about, um. A hundred days now, I think, to the legislature. And there's kind of a lot going on. Uh, we have a valid initiative in Prop HH that is up, uh, November seventh, I believe. Um, I know the city doesn't take any position on it, but, um, it could pretty radically change how taxes are administered in the state to both commercial and, uh, when it's property. Uh, so we'll see what happens. I hear polling is around fifty-five percent. Um, so proponents are, uh. I would say optimistic, but fifty-five percent is really right on the block. CMO, CMO's gifts.
Yeah, they came out.
I think CML and maybe even CCI. I can't remember, but I think CCL or CML, um, it did come out being opposition. So we're doing an opposition resolution right on our side. Okay, okay, that's good to know. So just let me know what you need then, who I need to contact. If you want me to sit down with Kevin, I mean, go over some of that proposal within, so he really understands where Cribble Creek is coming from. I think he'll appreciate it. Um, and I'm talking about Kevin Vaughn, who's ED at CML. So CML is actually on that notice going through a lot of transition. Um, they just lost, I think, three lobbyists. So they're, they only have one sort of senior person, so we'll see how that shot reforms. But, um, it's gonna be, it's gonna take a little time for CML to be totally attacked the way they were last a few years. Um, CCI has also lost, uh, their senior, uh, one of their senior lobbyists and policy experts. So, um, definitely some flaws to be filled on the local government side, uh, at the Capitol. So as far as legislative proposals that that we're seeing, there, there are bubbling up, uh, internet cafes. They are just, they're still there, they're still expanding. Um, municipalities are giving general business licenses to these businesses who set up illegal operations. Um, so what we're trying to do is to remind federal, state, and local enforcement to actually figure out how they can all talk to each other. So that we stop issuing licenses for, for these establishments. Uh, Stephanie can't be here right now. She says hi, and she's at home with her baby. Her and I met with the new, uh, gaming commissioner, Chris Schroeder. And just to talk about who he is, what he's looking at, um, sort of what his, uh, agendas could be as he comes into his, you know, as a commissioner. Uh, one of them was to address the gray machines and the gray industry that we're dealing with right now. Um, he really wants the cities to thrive because once he sees the city thriving, the businesses in that city and citizenry also. So I think, I don't know how he's going to approach it officially, but it sounded like he's looking at the cities and the businesses at the same time. And not prioritizing one, which is right, not that the last commissioner did that, but, uh, I'm glad to hear he's not coming and saying the businesses come first and the cities will come after. So that, that was refreshing. Um. Let's see, so as far as the gray machines and the internet cafes, um, we are looking at legislation. Uh, I think there needs to be more clarification in statute of what you can and cannot do. We've run two bills, one proactively by us, uh, one in twenty fifteen, one in twenty eighteen. And these businesses are very smart. Um, actually, they, they, um, understand how to find those loopholes and to keep these operations running. On top of that, you're having legitimate machines, uh, games of skill sitting next to illegitimate machines. So when, uh, an establishment is raided and, uh, equipment is seized, they don't differentiate between legal and illegal chips, they just take them all. So that's, that's also putting the legitimate, uh, businesses at risk. So, um, it is still at the top of the gaming commission's list. Um, I think Dan Hartman did a great job to address it as much as he could. He got, you know, letters, cease and desist letters from, I think, both the feds and the state to these establishments. Uh, one round already went up and another went out, and another cease and desist, uh, just went out, I think, a week or two. So, um. Our concern is valid, and I think we need to keep a really close eye on this, especially because Colorado Springs seems to be one of the places where it happens the most. And, um, and these, uh, general business licenses are issued. So any questions about that right yet? Okay, we're still formulating what that policy is going to look like and how it's going to be structured. Um, so I'll definitely come back to you, and we need to work with Black Hawk and such, to make sure we're all aligned and how we're going to. Uh, because if we don't get ahead of this, it's gonna. It, it could reach into much bigger policy changes that actually take away, uh, market share from the three states. So you, you think this is going on all over the state, Saul, or is it pretty much part of Springs? Yeah, it is. We're hearing, uh, all the way, uh, not in Bennett, uh, Junction, then Drago, then South. Quello, Quello is actually really active right now, um, with these businesses. So it's, it's on the eastern plains, it's in the mountains, it's on the west. Um, it is in metro areas too. Denver does have many, Denver doesn't seem to be an issue. Um, it's the surrounding.
So do they have a lobby group? Who, who? Uh, the, uh, the illegal machines.
They did, um, but when we passed that bill in twenty eighteen, it, they basically disbanded. Uh, because we were able to put that language in and say, you have to sell or remit your illegal equipment before this date, and if you don't, we're just gonna take it. And these are expensive machines, I imagine, just like machines up here, so, um, I, I.
So, sorry, have, uh, many of the legislators? Have been approached about writing up the bill?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, good. So there, there's an effort right now. I've actually talked to the Speaker of the House, minority leaders in both chambers. Don't, I haven't gotten the President of the Senate yet. Um, there's also, and on that note, there's a new Senate Majority Leader, Robert Rodriguez. Um, so there's a little bit of leadership change there, but I'll get to Robert too, because this is the stuff that really gets, gets to him. And these people, when they're getting licenses for illegal businesses and they're actually setting up shop and operating, it's a problem. Uh, and they're sort of, they're circumventing state statute. So we need to make that statute a lot clearer. Um, I think the penalties are pretty good, but they're still finding ways here. So I think that's, that's just making sure that language is super clear and that these are what is legal and what is illegal. And the constitutional provisions around it having to do with the three states. Uh, you cannot have a game of chance outside of one of the states. So, um, clarifying that in statute may, maybe the only, uh, at this point to stop this, because it keeps happening.
More and more.
More and more, and it's bigger than it was last. Uh, so, yeah.
Do we think that's probably what's affecting the gaming numbers? I mean, I know we've been down collectively, probably.
It's really hard to tell right now. I would actually, um, ask Paul what his thoughts are on it. Um, but, yeah, I, I mean, if, if the precedent alone, um, should be very toxic to this, if, if we don't do something about it.
It's been very upsetting to the local operators. They've spent a lot of time on it. They've gone down, gone into the places, uh, counting machines and things. This was last year. They were feeling it was getting close to the number of machine, the legal machines down there, because legal machines are even taller.
Wow.
You think that, uh?
Yes, it's definitely having.
I think casino operators would be endeavoring these people saying.
They, they don't, yeah, so we're working with CGA, uh, Lockstep, um, and the Gaming Association and individual casinos. That is a really compelling, I did not know. So, uh, that just goes to show the breadth and the depth, uh, of how pervasive this issue is, uh, becoming. And a part of it too is post-COVID, there was so much, um. Goodwill and giving people business licenses. They, they, they were basically rubber stamping everything in every community because they just needed those businesses to go back. Uh, so it, it's, it's a sad situation that we're dealing with, that people took. Uh, for people who were trying to be a legitimate business, uh, upper and, and off the ground. So, um, we will keep working on that. I will, um. I haven't seen any language yet, but, um, I should have something to share with, with the council. Um, any more questions on your next? And, and the big thing too is making sure the feds, the state, and the locals are all doing the same thing and coordinating, because that was part of the problem. So, well, not part of the problem, it was, it was a gap in the system that, that had a global health risk. And Dan did a really good job of addressing that before he went. Uh, we also have Speaker Mark Ferring. Do you know who is Department of Revenue Director? He is leaving Department of Revenue to go over to the Office of State Planning and Budget, probably having to do with, uh, land use issue, which I know we're tracking. Uh, we're not heavily involved in it, but it is coming back and will be, you know, prior to flipping much of section to figure out housing. Um, how that works with individual communities, CML, opposed last year, CCI wasn't at one point, at one point they were both opposed. So it's been, it's been a big, big issue for, uh, at least those two associations. Um. Yeah, some work on, on land use, if, if you're interested, please reach out to me. Uh, and then, as I said, Senator Donald McRae, who's the Majority Leader, went to Mike Johnson's office, and the mayor, uh, the mayor of them. Um, so now we have Robert Rodriguez, who was chair of business, um, and will be appointed that seat soon. Uh, just basically give it to you again, lay the land is forty-six Democrats, uh, to nineteen Republicans in the House. Uh, twenty-three Democrats in the Senate to twelve in the Senate. Um, there are twelve Republicans, uh, over there in the Senate. So that's one seat removal, which is one drawn, which, um, basically would allow, if you have a super-duped majority by the Democrats, you can suspend rules. You can do a lot of, uh, parliamentary things that, uh, would further nullify, uh, Republican. So, uh, I think a lot of people in that holding are looking for a little more balance. And, and next year, obviously, is a presidential election. Uh, I haven't heard anything more about polls, wanting to run for president, so I don't know what his thoughts are. There was a rumor at one point that he was thinking about it, but, um, I, I don't know about that. So, um. All in all, it's for us, the non-person, I think we're still at the top of a lot of people's list. Uh, when it comes to making sure the gaming communities are, uh, poor and poor. So we've had a lot of conversations with Speaker, um, both minority leaders. We have basically over in the Senate, and this is stuffy, but now, these are, that's an interesting one. Um, so you, you still have Republicans as your legislators, but, um. Yeah, so we'll see, it's gonna be a super politically charged session. Uh, happy to answer any questions, um, but things are gonna start moving. Thanks.
Yeah, appreciate your time.
Thank you, Saul.
Good to see you.
Yes, yeah, folks.
Yeah.
Oh, on December seventh, um, is the CML trading, is that?
Is that the one in Flower Springs?
What's lunch and round table that we got the invite for?
Think, uh.
With a lot of sliders and you get like fifteen minutes with everybody.
Regardless, when you do come up, I don't, you know, when you come up, like all of you, it would be great to meet with your legislators and meetings leadership. Especially because this, uh, gray machine issues, um, so getting so.
Well, I'll get with you between now and then and.
Sure. You bet.
Figure something out.
That's good. Good to see everybody.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Drive safely. Okay, new business, and item A. Election, uh, Mayor Pro Town Park, Cribble Creek Municipal Code Section two dash two dash thirty. So since I got elevated temporarily, we need a pro town. And we have any explanations?
I will, uh. I'll nominate Councilman Brown. Well, second. This is station.
Weird. Vote please. Councilman Liverland.
Yes.
Councilman Bowman.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown. Well, okay. Mayor Trenary?
Yes.
Humanamous?
Yay.
Agenda item B. Consider approval of a sublease agreement for the basement of the greenhouse to community of caring, all of ours.
Good evening, Council. Mr. Ingle gave us some good information on why community of caring wants to continue utilizing this space. Um, it is for storage. The agreement is for, uh, sublease for one year. Uh, the sublease has a thirty-day cancellation provision since the house and property are currently for sale. The sublease is for one dollar. And the city's lease with the property owner expires October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, uh, unless the property sells.
Just question, insurance, is, is the city cover this or is it communicating, cover their stuff in there?
The lease addresses that, they, um, I don't recall off the top of my head, I didn't see them have that standing. We have it insured, I know that, but I don't, I'm, I will have to look and go check it back, you know, for the terrible, uh. If there's a writer who there piece of that reason, but we've got the entire building. What's that, upstairs level is not usable.
The recovers using?
True.
We need to charge them that.
We do charge those.
Yes.
Yeah, so they don't have any cash to go into it.
And, and the lease does require, the sublease does re, does require community of caring to cover the insurance.
They won't.
The staff recommends approval of this request.
I, uh, motion that, uh, Council approves sublease agreement to the, for the basement of the green house to community of caring. Well, second.
Vote please. Councilman Bowman.
Yes.
Councilman Liverland.
Yes.
Mayor Proten Brown.
Yes.
Mayor Trenary.
Yes.
Thank you, Council. It looks like you're rich, you brought his dollars, so.
Okay, agenda item C. Consider approval of a revocable license agreement for the construction of a flagpole. With William Martin representing the Cribble Creek Baptist Church. Ken?
Evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, Ken Harson, planning department. Now, it's requested by the Baptist Church, I think. First and car to erect a flagpole in the city right of way. And we. Um, it's behind the sidewalk, behind the, the curb in that area, it does not impact, uh, circulation. Uh, the thirty-foot flagpole is being posed, or is your building permit for that? And, uh, you can see the. Southwest corner of Carment First, you know, slight plan here. Uh, and in the middle of all the red Xs there is the flagpole proposing, and it's eleven feet from the, from Car Street. And, uh. Thirteen feet from the case of, uh, first, so, um. The existing deck and stairway are in the right of way, and the previous, uh, revocable license had been approved for that construction. So this will be an additional, uh, construction in the right of way. Uh, you can see that we'd be in the grass, you're already now, now behind the, as we can see, but behind the sidewalk, two, two sidewalks. And so staff is recommending approval.
Well, I just have one question. Bill, what, what size flag are you going to be flying?
Uh, four.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Any other common ones? Okay, can I get a motion, please?
Motion, we approve, uh. Revocable license for the construction of a flagpole with Liam Martin representing the Creek Baptist Church.
No, second.
Oh, please. Councilman Liverland.
Yes.
Mayor Proten Brown.
Yes.
Councilman Bowman.
Yes.
Mayor Trenary.
Yes.
Yeah, agenda item D. First reading to consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twelve. And ordinance of the City Council for the City of Cribble Creek, Colorado, amending signage standards contained in Article Two of the City of Cribble Creek Development. Ken?
Yes, I'm, I'm choosing. Um. This. Is a. Divisions to the sign ordinance portion of the Development Code. We've had a moratorium in place currently. And so this is the first reason to, uh, review the changes to that. Uh, we had a board session back in seventeenth May, and now we have revisions, uh, that we're proposing based on those board sessions. So these are the list of significant changes. Uh, we're gonna limit electronic window signs to be one and a half square foot. Or two feet depending on the size of the building. And that's the open signs, the, uh, we have some examples, so we can show you in a moment. Uh, also, we'll allow backlit signs in the B and B zones, the business districts. Uh. And we'll allow signs on the railings to fund the businesses. While we don't have those in town currently, uh, you can either have, uh, a fine on the railing, or as the next line says, you can have a sandwich board. Well, we need a few advantage, but this does limit the sandwich. Signs to, to be out on the sidewalk only during business hours, so you can push out and work on that, so. Um. It does allow permanent, uh, off-permise signs, but only in vacant buildings. Uh, so we have advertised vacant storefront, we need to block off a view from what's inside. And then you can have a sign advertising, maybe one of the museums or, uh, another business somewhere else. After the signs are not allowed currently in our ordinance. So you can't advertise for your shop down the street on your property across town. And electronic signs will only be allowed in the C one and C two zones. And electrics. Signs, including electric display centers, such as we have on the, uh, Double Eagle and up on the Golden River. So those are existing signs and can remain, but any future signs of that type would not be allowed. And limits banners and that type of signs to thirty days. Ten days of time, so. That kind cleans up some of the. Currently, you can have ten days in a row, so you could have it ten days, one month. I mean, on a thirty, thirty, starting on the first, so it's a twenty-day period, just kind of. Cleans up a little bit about the issues. Want to make sure you understand what a backlit sign is, and that top picture shows that. So it's a sign with a light inside the letters. Example, jacks onto the wall or a wall behind it. So it highlights those letters, but it doesn't shine out like an internally illuminated sign. So it doesn't shine directly in traffic. Couple examples of window signs, illuminated type, which are open, they have the hours, just trying to restrict that, so they're not. Overwhelming of storefront. We did discuss square footage, but we did research. One and a half and two foot square foot, it's typical, it's available online, so like. Amazon or something like that. Obviously, there are some variations, but it seemed reasonable. Without the time. Electronic signs, just an example, sandwich boards, you see those freestanding. And those would have to come in at night or in off-hours. You could use a more permanent sign attached to railing outside your store. Maybe they're, because it doesn't obstruct traffic on the sidewalk. And this is an example of attempting any devices, which are banners, pennants, strimmers, and banners. And those are limiting to ten days of time. So any questions we can address for Council? Yes, please.
It came up after the work session, as far as banners. It came up the events like Donkey Derby Days, or Rodeo, or Fall Fest, or Fourth of July. It would be. A lot better if we could display those banners more than ten days ahead of the event. Because ten days basically limits you to one weekend of exposure prior to the event. And the ones I know at both ends of town, people pay attention to them.
So you're saying extend that just for special events? The banners? The banners.
That would be, that'd be difficult. Because a special event only would be a content-related regulation.
We could extend all banners to a fourteen-day, twenty-day, whatever the council.
Twenty-day would be.
I'm playing with twenty-day. Take that, Steve. You think that's sufficient?
I think it would be that, there's, you know, several weekend. Exposure to the tourists coming into town that. You know, also the museum fence is a good place to do that. So. The other one, under banners, is. No longer allowed to post banners on T-Post. How would we address? Where, we do put the banners at both entrances to the.
Not sure about the other entrances. I know coming sixty-seven down the hill, that is actually outside city limits. Outside of our control.
Okay.
So CDOC's jurisdiction, they can respond to that, they feel fit.
Okay. Cool. That's all we have.
This is the first reading, so I have some public comment at this point.
We'd save it for the.
So do we need to? How would we read this with twenty-day? How would we approve this as a twenty-day with change to that?
You could just make that, approve it on first reading with that, change from ten days to twenty-day increase, or increase from ten days to twenty. And that would be the motion. Approve on first reading with the change, the amendment to change the ten-day to twenty days. In the banner section of the table. That's section ten.
I'll make that motion. We'll give a second.
Councilman Leatherland?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yeah.
Mayor Pro Tim Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Teneri?
Yes.
Um, yes. And that's it. We got a short even.
Wow, nice. You did, yeah.
Oh, and.